All right, can I get a anyone have any comments on the minute or anyone there's a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, please?
So move second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, one absent, motion carried.
Okay, with that, it's a public official comments. I know we have distinguished director Darcy Burke in the audience. Darcy, welcome.
Thank you, President Van Bleet, members of the board, staff, neighbors, friends. A couple of things. Last week, we dedicated our corporate office, our administrative building, to Director Phil Williams, who passed unexpectedly last year. He was the longest serving member of Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District in our history, over 20 years. And he died, he was just over 60 years old, 62 years old, when he died unexpectedly last year, right before Thanksgiving. What most people didn't know, he's actually, when he was first married, he lived in Canyon Lake. He was one of the youngest residents at the time, and he only lived here a little over a year and a half because his, he said his neighbors didn't like that he parked his work truck in the driveway. So his wife didn't want to stay here, so they moved out. But he still was someplace, he said, that was the first year they spent their married life. And so that's where they started their, their life together. It was actually a very nice ceremony. We actually had the representation from the Senate and the Assembly and county supervisor. So it was a nice memorial. So we were very glad that people were able to come out and join. And if you drive by now, his name is on the side of the building, and there's a plaque in front of the area where you enter the boardroom as well. On Thursday, we'll be considering two Prop 218 rate increases, one on a water contingency surcharge, which would be if there's an earthquake, an emergency declared by the governor, or some other thing where we, our water supply is actually in jeopardy or taken out, there's a surcharge that the board can take action. And that would be a short term surcharge. It's actually required by law and part of our urban water management plan. Even though we have been in an emergency, a drought emergency for like two years now, even though we had all that rain, the governor has never lifted the drought emergency. As of today, we are still in a drought emergency, just so you know. The board has never enacted the current drought surcharge we have. This emergency water supply contingency surcharge would replace that. We are also going to consider wastewater or sewer surcharge on Thursday night as well. That would raise the typical wastewater bill for a family of four, about $5 a month. Some of those contributing factors are obviously energy costs, chemical costs. And for an example, our chemical costs, especially in wastewater, have gone up for about 300% over the last two years. And wastewater especially, chemistry is very important, and so is chemicals. So those are just some of the things that are out of control, as well as new and advancing regulatory costs. So if someone would like to oppose those rates, they're welcome to come to the board meeting on Thursday at 4 o'clock, and they can provide public comment, or they can submit a letter of protest. All are welcome to do that. The Canyon Lake Water Treatment Plant will, is about 90% designed and complete. They're going through the final constructionability review now. We hope to start that project in the first part of next year and have it online by 2027. Part of that process, though, is also an agreement we made with Metropolitan, that we have capacity in some of our larger pipelines from Metropolitan to move more water, so that we would have more stability in the lake level. So it'll be a while before we turn that plant on. And once they start to decommission the plants that's there, there will be no way we can turn the plant on. So what we have done in the meantime is we have made an agreement with Eastern Municipal Water District. So if you happen to live on the east side of the lake, you might actually be served by Eastern Municipal Water District. We have made an agreement, an intertie, an arrangement. So in an emergency, we can actually move more water from eastern to serve the remainder of the lake, so that we wouldn't be able, there wouldn't be a problem. People would still actually have access to water, which is obviously the top priority. Next year, we also will be launching and looking at some projects on some of our wellheads for PFOS treatment. As you may know, the United States Environmental Protection Agency didn't think California's number of five parts per trillion was enough. So they're moving it to four parts per trillion, which will cause us to actually have to put treatment on our wellheads as well. So that also means more money. So I'm trying to think if there's anything new else and exciting. All our projects are coming in way above budget of estimates. We also own the Lee Lake Dam, or what we renamed Elsinore Valley Dam. So if you're familiar with the Corona Lake, where the fishing is on the 15 freeway, originally that dam reconstruction and revision was coming in at $40 million. The latest estimates were over $70 million. In California, just by nature, what it is, you do not want to remove a dam, you'll never get that dam back. So we are looking at ways to get some state and federal funding, because it is a damn safety issue. Even saying that sounds funny. It's a damn safety issue, but it is a damn safety issue. So trying to offset as much as we can with federal and state funding, so that our customers aren't bearing the brunt of that. I'm happy to take any questions.
Hi, Darcy.
Hi, Joe.
I think I heard you say that the treatment plant will be online in 2027?
That's the plan.
That's the plan. So is, is that when we can start to think about the water level fluctuating back up and down again?
Yes and no. So yes, the plant will be back on. The goal is to keep the fluctuation minimally. We're going to spend over $60 million on that plant. And where before, we would only use that plant five to six months a year. So it was a stranded asset. It doesn't make sense to do that financially. So by using and having more regular water imported into the lake, and keeping the water at a higher level, we can use that, that treatment plant more often. Although I know that puts some challenges for people that want to repair seawalls and that type of thing. We're going to have to come up with some creative methods to make that happen.
I understand. It's also creates issues with the tunnel, the causeway. So we need to work on that together, I guess.
Better buy a smaller boat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy.
Hey, Darcy.
How are you, Darcy?
I just wanted to take a minute to thank you for you and the staff over at the Water District for taking me on the tour of the facilities and the dam last month. Thought that was really great and informational, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for taking the time and the interest.
Thank you, Darcy. Are there any other public officials? Doesn't look like it. Okay. So tonight, for something we haven't done now in about 16 months, we, we have our community patrol update. So Allied Universal representatives are here, Zach and Kit, to give us an update on, on our community patrol service.
I'm Zachary Wells. I'm the security captain for Canyon Lake. I put together a monthly report for us to go over today. In September, we had seven calls for service for speeding. However, we did not get any with the patrol units. Parking violations, 42 calls came in, but we issued 40, 491 citations for parking. We had 39 calls for unauthorized entry, and six of those led to citations. We had five golf cart calls, which nine of those, nine citations were issued throughout the month, with the 38 e-bike calls, which we were unable to catch and issue citations. We had one report of vandalism, 26 reports of property damage, and we had 27 noise complaint, which eight of those led to citations. With all that happening, we had a total of 220 calls of service. 82 of those calls ended up, we were unable to locate. 323 citations were issued out to guests. Two of those were, two citations were issued to service providers. 169 citations were issued to members, and all of, of all those, 360 of those were warning citations. We confiscated, we confiscated over 86 passes last month, or in September, that were unauthorized for people to enter. And we had spent 45 minutes doing Tulane Protocol, trying to assist traffic at main gate.
Thank you, Zach. Really appreciate you coming up to inform us. Kit, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time, sir.
Board members, any questions or comments for, any questions from the members present? All right. Thank you so much for, for coming and giving some update. Appreciate that, guys. I have one announcement. On November 16th, Thursday, November 16th, at 5 o'clock, at the Eastport Pickleball Courts, we're going to be doing a ribbon cutting ceremony. For those who would like to attend, please come forward. It's been, the courts were opened a few weeks ago, three, four weeks ago, to, to a very happy crowd of pickleball players. They, they're pretty thrilled with the, the end result. And anyway, it's this Thursday, not this Thursday, the following Thursday, is a normal pickleball club potluck, I think. Social, social. And that will, and we'll have that and a, and a ribbon cutting ceremony. So if anyone's interested, please, please come out and join us. So the next item on the agenda is, is the opportunity for members to comment on, on items that are not on the agenda. So I know there's a number of people present that may want to speak about agenda items. You do not have to, you can just, when it comes to an agenda topic, you can raise your hand and come forward. But for, if you have a topic to address that is not on the agenda, you have to fill out a form. So Harmony, how many do we have?
Seven.
All right. And the first, first selection is?
Yes, our first is Art Fester.
Good evening, board members and staff. So I wanted to first apologize for my late night, New York style visceral response to the posting I saw about charging for, for the motorcycle parking on that. Not sure what I was thinking. I know I was tired, grumpy, and been a bad day on that, but there's no excuse for it. So the next morning, I revised that quickly to reflect it more, more appropriate, more, more informative. So again, no, no offense meant on that. That was just my bad on that. And I've self punished myself by doing something. But I have good news. So I'm here tonight to offer you some suggestions, or a suggestion on the motorcycle issue. And I realize this may take a member vote, or perhaps with some creative work, but from our attorney, maybe not. And I think we all know, when you cut to the chase, the problem, or the potential is the noise. We're past the point back in the 60s, where their motorcycle gangs riding around, and people didn't want motorcycles in here. We think, no, it's the noise. So if we set some kind of standard, maybe like that of a factory stock ZO6 Corvette, which is 650 horsepower, when it starts up and idles, it rumbles a bit on that, but it's not deafening, it doesn't wake people up, what have you. Maybe that was the decibel level standard that's acceptable for motorcycles. If you want to ride your bike from the main gate to your home only, you have to go down to wherever it is, to Community Patrol, what have you, get a decibel measurement. If you pass that, if it's acceptable, then you get a little mini license plate that goes below your regular license plate with the number on it. And then you also have a sticker. So if you go home, you can't say, oh, I'll take this approved one off and put it on my unapproved motorcycle. There has to be a backup sticker inside there. But this way, you have something that's acceptable. You can look at and say, it's no louder than anything else. You can only go from a gate into your home. If you're on Tumblewee Drive, and you live on, down by Eastport, there's no reason for you to be on Tumblewee Drive if you live on Eastport at all. There's, you can't say, I was going from a gate to get there on that. You will get fined, or whatever will happen. Something along the lines, we can limit it. Now, I know that may be an issue with the CCNRs, but technically speaking, we could say, we kind of violate those by the fact you can open the gate, drive through and go in front of it. That you have to have, that that's a given on that. You can't ask someone to push a thousand pound Goldwing, whatever. But I don't know if, with the attorneys on that, if there's some amendment that could be added, or something on the sake that because of lack of traffic safety, we let them ride their motorcycle in. Well, for the lack of, the ability to be able safely secure the motorcycles as it stands now, we let them drive home if they meet the standards. Also, keep in mind that like Harley-Davidson, and BMW, and others are coming up with electric motorcycles. They have them on the road now, they're just as quiet as the e-bike. So that was just a thought to throw out there. I know you're all working on this. You're doing what's in the best interest of the POA and everything else. So we appreciate that, and wish everybody a very happy holiday. And got it within one second. Was that good?
Perfect.
Pretty cool, huh?
Perfect, Art.
All right, everybody. Happy holiday.
Thank you for your input.
Travis Montgomery.
Travis Montgomery, 3863010. And thank you for the opportunity to be here. I started talking with this in the previous board regarding electric bicycles in January of this year. Since that time, a lot of progress has been made in establishing rules and regulation for the safe operation of these vehicles. Once the rules and regulations were in place, implementation and enforcement, I and E, became the task at hand. The rules and regulations have been published, that's part of the implementation. Now it's time for enforcement. I can tell you from personal observation, that enforcement does not appear to have begun in any meaningful way. I live on Canyon Lake Drive North, so I see lots, lots of e-bikes going by my house every day, with no helmet operators and multiple riders. And I see wheelies and other grandstanding. Catching wheelies and grandstanding is difficult to enforce, because if an e-bike operator sees a community patrol vehicle, they don't grandstand. But riding by that, or a parked community vehicle does, community patrol vehicle does not eliminate the violation of no helmet and multiple riders. As good as the POA's attempt is at informing the e-bike community of the new rules and regulations, including registration, maybe, I don't think there's any better communication than enforcement. A few citations for no helmet, multiple riders, no registration, and the world, word will spread through the community like wildfire. I'd like to hear tonight, how many e-bikes have been registered since the rules and regulations were adopted. I'd also like to hear how many citations were written in the month of October. I recently notified staff that at the East Gate, e-bikers without helmets and with multiple riders were being admitted through the gates. I asked the Community Patrol Service Officer why, and he said he had no authority to stop them. We don't allow other vehicles that are not in compliance with our rules and regulations through the gates, except to immediately park a motorcycle or vehicles towing boats that haven't been properly tagged. Why do we allow e-bikes? I hope staff has resolved this issue, because I did call it to their intention. In my closing comments last January, I said, I urged, urged the board to take immediate action before someone is seriously injured or killed. I again urge you to take aggressive enforcement action before someone is seriously injured or killed. Time is running out. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Travis, just as a point of clarification, on your, as you saw, you did hear, Community Patrol did report on some statistics. We have not registered any bikes yet. And the reason for that is we've been waiting for the tags to come in. And you, the tags will be, are now in. And sometime in the next few weeks, we'll be doing a kickoff. We'll announce that for registration. And so it's just been a matter of getting, having that catch up with, with our process. So with the next person is?
Valerie Montgomery.
Valerie Montgomery, 3863, Lot 10. I too am very concerned about the e-bikes. I live in the same house as he does, and we see the e-bikes coming across, across the causeway, down around the circle. And by the time they get to our house, they're going full bore, at least 30, 35 miles an hour. They get up on our curb, which is this wide. They cross the curb down into our, our curb cut for our driveway. And then they, they catapult into the street. They also do that in the, they also have done that in the, in the, in the bunkers on the golf course. They come down, use the golf, get in the bunkers, catapult themselves out, and then get onto the green. And we've had two incidences of the e-bikes doing wheelies and make, and donuts in our, in two of our greens. And it's very expensive to fix that. But tonight, on our way to the, to the meeting, on Canyon, on Canyon Club Drive, we encountered about 10 e-bikes. Half of them had dual riders. They were probably six or seven of them with helmets, but that was all. Four or five of them had headlights. They were all dressed in dark clothing. And it should be very concerning to the parents of these, of these kids, that recklessly ride around in our community when it's, when it's just not safe. And I'm, I'm just so concerned. We, we have grandchildren, and I would really be saddened if something happened to one of them. But we have to enforce the rules. The, I'm on the Green Committee, and we spent quite a bit of time going over the rules for the golf course, for the e-bikes, and the e-scooters, and the, the, anyway, the third, the third, yeah. And we just wonder, all of us in the community wonder when, when enforcement is going to happen. The gentleman from, from security said that they encountered 30 e-bikes doing, breaking the rules in our community this, this month. They couldn't chase any of them. They couldn't catch them. And we stopped on our way, when we saw the group of riders tonight coming into the meeting, we stopped the Community Patrol, which was probably 100 yards behind them. And we said, aren't you going to do anything about them? He says, I don't have any authority to chase them.
Chase, that's true.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Dan Kelly.
You can.
My name's Dan Kelly. I'm at 377-8055. What I gave you is a petition. So the residents of Pheasant Drive are permitting to have the illegal mechanic shop closed at 22907 Pheasant Drive to be shut down. We are tired of all the disruptions in the street. Several vehicles blocking the streets, noise daily, all night long, all day, all night. On this petition, I had 21 people that own houses on there sign it. I had about three or four other ones that wouldn't do it, because they were scared of retaliation from the owner that lives there, Sperry. If you look through the pictures, the first couple, well, the, the second page is the houses and how they're located. Next to Mr. Sperry, the people moved out probably six months ago. They can't sell their house because of the house next door. The people across the street moved out, they're renters. They're selling that house now, too. I would look at, I would, thinking about moving out also, but I can't, because I got to disclose I have a bad neighbor. So I'm kind of trapped there. If you look at some of the pictures, the first one is Mr. Sperry pulling a motor out of a boat with a crane. Does anybody ever have that happen in their neighborhood, the guy operating a crane in the front yard pulling motors out? I do. You know, and it's, and it goes on day and night. For the last nine years, I've dealt with this bullshit. I don't know what else to say. There's, there's pictures of him pulling dune buggies off. There's a picture here, there's got three, this is September 9th, he's got three trucks in the front driveways. And this went on for three days of him wrenching and grinding. This is a perfect example. This, the last page there, it's a dune buggy that pulled to his house at 10:30 this last Sunday. I just opened a bottle of champagne. I'm going to watch the Ram game and have mimosa. No. He pulls up revving the motor, or a neighbor did, revving the motor. I called security. Security says, sorry. No security goes to his house anymore. Call the sheriff. The security is not allowed to approach him, go anywhere near him, because he's so violent. Okay. The sheriff came. He told the sheriff, give me a message. Tell fat ass across the street, I'm never shutting this business down. POA, the lake, nobody can shut this down. This is my business, and this is America. I'm like, really? So the officer reported it to the POA and the, and the city. So they're going to, the city's working with me, too, to try to shut this down. The city attorney's working on it. Whatever, say, oh, the, the big, the big truck that was there, it got firebombed about six, seven weeks ago. Somebody went to his house and firebombed it. Okay. Threw a mothcock, cocked on it. And they had to come out 2:00 in the morning and spray it down. He had oil going all the way down there, down the street, and out. And I went out there, I'm like, what are you guys doing to clean this up? He had two kids cleaning this up. We're like, where's the fire department? Where's that cleanup on this? And almost, and people are going through the oil and driving all over the place. And he's got contaminants all through his front yard, his garage. You know, there's, I don't know, I could be here all night. But you know, the biggest problem is when security can't approach the guy, because he's so dangerous. I'm not mocking the security, but for their safety. But what, maybe we should send two or three over there with a camera, you know, to try to put a stop to it. So I'm at Winston's. I hope you guys can help everybody on the street to, to do something with this guy. I know you guys has got your job cut out for you, but that's all we can hope for. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We certainly feel for you. We'll look into this matter subsequently.
Lindsay Clark. Claude Beauchamp.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Claude Beauchamp, 3718004. Before I get on my topic, I just wanted to make one comment about the e-bikes. One thing of safety, because, and I, you know, I've seen them around as well, but at nighttime, they're invisible. No lights are required whatsoever, you know, and this is for the safety of the kids. That, that, that's, that should be a, that should be a no brainer. So anyways, I just wanted to add that. So what I wanted to talk about was on the storage pods that we see out on the streets, okay. We see a growing number of them on the street sign in the golf cart lane. I know there's one near where I live on vacation, and, and I know that one's been there for at least six months. So, you know, it's, it's an obvious safety issue. It creates a blind corner. As a matter of fact, my wife was telling me this evening, that today she had to swerve to avoid someone coming out of their driveway, who couldn't see the traffic because a pod was sitting right there. So, you know, and I can see that, you know, if something were to happen, then that would open up the POA to huge liability, especially when they, they have the ability to do something about it before anything happens. You know, I'm not, I'm not certain what the rules are on RVs parking. Correct me if I'm wrong. I thought it was like 72 hours on, on load up, and then disload up, or disloading. So, you know, something of that nature where, okay, give them some time to actively load or unload a pod, but then beyond that, it needs to move. Like even if, if it's in their driveway, but not on the street. It's, it's too dangerous, and it's just an accident waiting to happen. So ahead.
Thank you, Claude. Appreciate that. Since the topic was great, can we get clarification on what the rules? Since, since the topic was great, can we get clarification on what the rules are? Can I ask Eric, can you, or Cheryl? We do allow pods or stored temporary storage units on streets if you get a permit. And they're allowed for a fixed period of time. 30 days. Okay. And then there, and there can be an extension, but if you feel there's a safety issue or so forth, I think the members can contact, uh, ACC, not ACC, our, our planning and compliance, uh, organization and they can look into it. So for information, thanks. Next up.
Last is John Triolo.
All right. My name is John Triolo, 38, 63, 14, traction lot. Um, just wanted to talk about the, the motorcycle, um, parking, you're going to be setting up a parking lot. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I didn't see, couldn't find a whole lot on what this parking lot's all about. But if you came over and asked just about anybody who has a motorcycle, do we need better security? And they'd all say yes. But if you ask us about everybody who has a motorcycle, do they want to pay $40 a month? They'd say no, you know, they don't want to pay $40 a month because if you throw $30 on your insurance for the year, you could get theft. You know, theft, you could get accessories, everything else could save you, you know, money. Plus you could take it anywhere and it gets stolen or vandalized or whatever. So that's one of the things. Another thing you can do for $30, you know, for $40 a month, you could buy yourself a trailer and haul it away. I don't think, I don't know if you guys have had the, um, the time to go ahead and talk to the people who own the motorcycles. I'm sure there are some that would like to have it and others that might not. But I see 250 to 275,000 being a lot of money for the few motorcycles we have. And just like the, somebody said before, you could probably throw that towards a cause, causeway to raise it up and, you know, or, or whatever, there could be a hundred different things, but I don't think that this would be a good investment on money. And do we have 250 or 275,000? Or are we going to just borrow on the money before we have it? And if we're going to borrow on the money, that means in a couple of years, you guys might not be here. There'll be someone else and they'll say, well, we need to go ahead and raise the dues for everybody just to, you know, get us back at it dead. So I don't think that it's a good idea. I, I am a motorcyclist. I've been riding, you know, for the last 12 years. I don't really have a problem with parking at the gate at first, you know? Even before I moved in, the first thing I asked for is I said, where do you park your motorcycles? Cause I didn't want to see the houses if I didn't feel it was safe. Now, does stuff happen? Absolutely. Stuff happens everywhere. Will stuff happen? Even if you have this gate up, if somebody wants something, they will get through the gate. Now, with that said, are they going to be enclosed? I know it'll be in a gate, but you're going to have pods like garages in there for each motorcycle? Are they just all going to be lined up underneath an awning? You know, like we have at the Eastport. Cause if it's all lined up under the awning, you know, really it's just, all you're doing is spending a lot of money for something we don't really need. I heard a couple of people talking about the kids with the motor, with their bicycles and stuff. And I do agree that there are some safety issues, but there's some things that we could. I don't, I don't know. When I was a kid, we all had mopeds. Nobody had helmets. We all rode triple on it. It was all fine. You know, it, we were all having fun, but there are some things like when they're riding the, the wrong way in traffic. When you pull out a driveway, you're expecting vehicles to come one way, they might be coming the other. And with them disrespecting adults on occasion, you know, I've talked to some of these kids and they seem like pretty good kids. You know what I mean? As far as them pulling wheelies on the street and stuff, yeah, they got skills or just having fun, just like we probably did on our BMX bikes and stuff. But as far as, you know, as far as that whole thing goes, I, I'd say a, a helmet, you know, for sure, proper direction on the road, lights and reflectors at night. And other than that, you know, being respectful, they should be fine. And if they're causing any damage to property, that needs to be prosecuted right away, going on the golf course and tearing up parks. Leads me to one other thing. Over by the bike track over there, you could set them up to, if they want to ride in the parks, you could set them up over there to ride in the hill over there, the valley. Why landscape the whole thing when they're riding on it anyway? You could make a trail over there. Costs nothing.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your comment. Just for everyone's reminder, we, we have passed, we already passed a number of e-bike rules in prior meetings. Those are again, the kickoff of that, of the registration will be here in a, in a, within the, before the next board meeting, uh, most likely. So. Uh, any other comments? None, none others. Okay. Again, we appreciate the, the comments on that. Also, I know there's additional ones who want to speak on, on the subject of motorcycles. And we'll give you that opportunity as, as we go through it. There's a lot of clarification to be had there, but we do appreciate everyone coming and, and offering us opinion. Uh, as we evaluate these options and consider them, and we always do a better job when we hear specifically from, from, uh, the people in the community and, and you help us make better decisions. So thank you for that. Okay. Moving on to item seven on the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right. Is there a motion then to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Or in favor, one opposite, motion carried.
All right. Well, the, we'll take the first item on the agenda then is let's talk about secure motorcycle parking. Some of you may have heard about this, maybe on social media. This weekend. And, uh, and so, uh, we need to have a motion from our board to consider the proposal. Is there a motion?
For the sake of discussion, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of, uh, discussing this item? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. It might.
Not opposed.
You're not opposed. Thank you. It might be helpful to, before we ask for comments from the, from the members, to provide a little more background than is provided in the package. Director Bill, would you like to, to give, uh, the community, um, some more background on what is being proposed?
First of all, I appreciate you guys coming out. One of the reasons that's on the agenda is to get feedback. We have repeatedly asked for feedback and we haven't gotten it. So it's great that you guys came out here. I know Art apologized for stirring the pot. I actually appreciate that because it finally got you guys here. So looking at the motorcycle parking issue, we haven't determined yet what we're doing. We've had the FPC, the Facilities Planning Commission, Committee, sorry, put a program together. The P O A staff had a program together, how they're going to do it. We're comparing those, but in, in order to make a good decision, we need your feedback. And that's what we're looking for. You're more than welcome to come up and talk, call us, email us. But no one's reached out to us except for one person in the back of the room who's been very helpful. And, you know, we really need to hear from you or else we're going to decide what to do and then you're going to be mad and then it's going to be too late. Bottom line on motorcycles entering Canyon Lake. It is a C C N R change. I looked into it today because, you know, we're like, and truthfully, I've ridden bikes for years. I've had a bike stolen. I don't ride one now because I live here. So I do understand where you're coming from. But when we look into changing the C C N Rs, you need two thirds of everyone that lives here to vote yes. So what's two thirds of 4,800? You're looking at what? 3,400, 3,500 people have to vote yes to change that rule. Go ahead.
So we're going to withhold member comment until we get a chance to introduce the measure and then you can opportunity to speak.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be addressed separately just because e-bikes are fairly new. It's, we're going back to the origins of Canyon Lake, if you will, on this one. So we're kind of stuck with it. So that's where we're at. Those that want to change the rules, that's what it's going to take. The other part of that, um, a lot of people say, well, why can't I just ride it to my house real quick? How are we practically going to do that? Is there a practical approach to that? If you have one, we'd like to hear it because we don't see a practical approach. So we don't think that's going to happen. And also now you've got the bikes in, once they're in, we're violating the C C N Rs. So it's, it's just not going to happen. It's not our choice. So I love bikes. I unfortunately promised my wife I wouldn't ride one anymore because it's California traffic. So I wanted to let you know that's what part of that is. The, um, we said, the reason it's on the agenda is to bring the discussion to the forefront. The basic overview of this, people ask, why is it so expensive? There's three things that we're looking at here that right now the senior center is being overrun with motorcycles. We are not legally obligated to turn that area of the property over for motorcycle parking. The P O A does that because we understand there's a problem. Right now they're actually pushing into the senior center, working their way down, and that's got to change. So one of the things we're looking at is expanding the parking spaces. So the cost of this, and like I said, there's two different approaches. So I'm going to talk about one. The first approach is to extend the parking lot back if we can. Unfortunately, there's a golf course back there. There are some houses back there. We also have to look at drainage issues back there. So that's where some of the expense comes from. You asked about the fence and stuff surrounding it. We're looking at, it has to fit in architecturally. So we're looking at a wrought iron fence around it. We're also looking at cinder block to come up a little bit off the ground, which will make it harder. I don't see a lot of people picking up a bike and pushing it through wrought iron fence. We're also going to be looking at motion activated lights, cameras, all the stuff that goes with it. So when you have those, you also have to run the, um, internet cables, all that sort of stuff. Camera cables, electrical, all these things that go with it. So when you're looking at the grading, drainage issues, extending the parking lot, that's where the number comes in. Also, since this is a rough estimate, 250 is thrown out as a rough number. Truthfully, the number is probably closer to two, two, 10, two, 20 at most. But we are going to estimate high because we might not even get to this this year. But we're going to have to plan it in a budget. So we assume the worst case scenario. So those of you that are complaining about the $40 a month, that's my fault. I threw in the highest number that was discussed to have a talking point. Because no one responded when we asked for input, other than they were pissed off and wanted to drive the bikes in the lake, which is not an answer. So yeah, I'm glad you're here and I'm sorry that we had to put this out to bring you in here. But the price, you know, it could be $10 a month, it can be $40 a month. We don't know.
So at this point, let's, let's open it up to the members. If you would like to come and speak on the subject, please raise your hand and we'll call you up one by one. Ms. Clark, please come forward.
Member this time. Good afternoon, evening, it's evening now. God's so dark. Um, I would like to begin with saying thank you for some of the writers that have come. Um, and with all due respect to the board, this is a very, very hot topic. So please understand that this is not meant in any disrespectful manner. Trying to bring these two entities together is going to be a very difficult process for all that are involved. I'm trying to take into account what some of the writers feel and you need to understand that guys, it's, it's hard for them too, and I get it, but it's very frustrating for us as writers. I don't know if many of you know me, I've had two bikes stolen. My bikes and covers have been vandalized several times. Um, I know there's other families that have had such issues. Couple of the questions that we have are, who are on these committees that came up with these ideas for the gates? I asked last time I was here to be on it, never received any feedback back. I emailed you guys when my second bike was stolen, I got back, hey, did you contact P O A and the sheriff? I, I get it. It's very frustrating. The frustrating part we have with the payment of it is, this is a very, it's been going on for about three years. This increase in security problems. It should have been placed into the budget somehow before things like the center median or the solar, the, uh, this horrible solar that everybody hates. The propane tank at the senior center, this is a safety issue. This is a safety and security issue. And it should have been budgeted in. We should not be being charged for the lack of security. I mean, the security company we have is contracted to you guys. You guys contracted that security company. Part of their job is the cameras, which was supposed to be part of the motorcycle parking to begin with and is not. Cause there's zero footage of you and my bikes getting stolen. There's supposed to be patrols going on. So yeah, they've written 490 something parking citations. Great. I got two of those in 10 hours for an expired, the midnight expired parking on my, my brother's truck who was on deployment. Two tickets in 10 hours. So between midnight and 10 o'clock. And you're telling me that you can't secure the front gate motorcycle parking, any gate motorcycle parking? This is, and this is an ongoing issue. Our question is you stated that you counted 40 bikes there. When did you go out? Was it when people were moving their bikes for the senior center holiday thing? I have a minute left. I'm going to talk really fast, you guys. I'm sorry. You said you had 40 bikes. Was it when they went out for the senior center holiday thing and people had moved their bikes? I know when I was there the other day, I counted like 60. That's just the front gate. And that's just people that are still parking there with all the crime that started. I know that there are people here that keep their bikes at home because they can't physically trailer them back and forth all the time. So they just don't ride anymore. Now they got bikes sitting in their garage, nothing to do with them because they have no place to safely put them. That's not okay. Yes, we all knew we couldn't ride when we moved in here. That's not a topic. Bringing the bikes in and out in the C C N Rs, whole different issue. Okay. That's something we'll have to deal with on a whole different board meeting in time. This motorcycle parking and charging us for it is absolutely absurd and out of control. We should not be charged to put our vehicles someplace safe when the safety is kind of up to you guys because it's the contract you guys made. So.
Appreciate your comments, Lindsay. Thank you. Anyone else raise your hand? Please come forward. Just press the red button, please.
Okay. Thanks for having me. Um, first, Otto Fonseca. Um, this is my first time being here, going on two years moving here. Uh, moving in here, we knew about the motorcycle rule. I've been riding for over 32 years. I currently have two Harleys in my garage, which I've rode maybe twice, trailering them in and out. I understand there's rules, but some of us like to ride our bikes and we still respect the rules. I don't understand if there's not that many of us that, if, like you said, the rule will never get changed. There's not enough of us here. I understand. So why create extra money? When you guys can do something for the little bit of riders that are in here? And like Mr. Art said, maybe idle in, idle out. If you violate them, it's a hefty $1,000 fine. I mean, something to accommodate. I mean, golf carts are louder, uh, e-bikes. I, I don't care about the e-bikes. Let kids be kids. I mean, if they get hurt, then that's on them. And I have four kids myself and one comes home and says, hey, I got hurt. You deserve it, son. Let's go to the hospital. But at the end of the day, there should be something that should accommodate the riders. And I, I would take my beautiful bride on more motorcycle rides and I would idle out. And if you don't know how to idle a motorcycle, then I'm sorry, we should take it from you and give it to me. But allow us to idle in, idle out. If you get caught outside the, uh, golf cart lane, whatever it's called, hefty fines, fine us. I'll pay it if I'm out of it, but trust me, I don't want to revoke my privileges. So based on what you said, you're never going to change the rule. But maybe allow something for the very, very few that are here to accommodate us. I mean, it's really not that hard. E-bikes, golf carts, Corvettes, I have classic cars. They're louder than my Harley. I, I get it. So if it's a noise thing, let's figure something out. There's not enough of us, but the ones that do use them and do love them and would like to continue to live in this beautiful community that we have. Let's get together and figure something out. It's not that hard. We're never going to win a vote. I mean, that's just the fact of it, but I'll tell you what, if you say, hey, Otto, we're going to hit you with the $1,000 fine if we catch you outside the bike lane. And I'm, I'm too little to walk the bike out. I mean, that's just the truth. So, I mean, I don't know. At the end of the day, it's, we're just asking help us that are like such a small group. That's it.
Otto, thank you for, uh, coming forward and for speaking for the first time. Appreciate that. Any other members who haven't spoken yet like to speak? Yes. And then next.
Travis Montgomery, 38, 63, zero, one, zero. Uh, and I don't expect to get any applause. Jeff made the point about our C C N Rs. I've got a good friend who's been trying to get the C C N Rs changed for two years so that he could park his RV on his property. But it's about a foot too long and it sticks out. So he's, has to go out and park his, or find a place and rent and pay a lot more than $40 a month to park his RV because our C C N Rs say you can't do that. to park his RV because our C C N Rs say you can't do that. If we're going to start doing things with our C C N Rs, we provided parking for a long time for motorcycles, but you know, I don't know why we don't do it for the people with RVs. Um, are we going to be opening Pandora's box? To ask the rest of us to help pay for those things and even though you're charging a monthly fee? Um, guy can't park his RV. We don't provide him space. Why are we providing space for motorcycles? Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Mr. Hawker.
Thank you. Paul Hawker, 3804052. Um, I'm a Harley guy, ridden motorcycles all my life. Uh, we're an emotional group. Um, thank you for taking the time to, to hear everybody out. But I, I just heard something that may be the solution. If, you know, already the P O A is generously offering parking spaces for the, uh, for the motorcycles that people don't want to ride them home. Uh, you know, that's a nice accommodation. Uh, but there is a security issue, same as when we park our cars, there are motorhomes on the street. It's a security issues. Uh, what another speaker just mentioned may be a better solution. Instead of spending a quarter of a million dollars on this, it may make more economic sense for people to simply insure their bikes and ensure their accessories. If it's that inexpensive, from a business standpoint, you know, if there's 60 bikes parked there, all 60 don't get stolen. One does here, one does there. But that's just normal. You go out to any kind of a biker rally and bikes get stolen all the time. It's just part of being a biker. So just, just an idea.
Does it get stolen outside of?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And it looks like we have someone trying to call in by social media, Alyssa DeCasperus?
Yeah. How do I talk?
Alyssa, go ahead and go ahead and speak. Alyssa, are you trying to call in or?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Please, please proceed.
Okay, so I had submitted comments in writing. Um, I just got in from the train, so I can't be there at the time, at this time. Do you have my comments that can be read aloud? Or do I need to pull them up?
I do not have them. We do not have them, Alyssa.
Okay, give me just one moment so that I can pull them up. I'm sorry about that. I thought as, as in most public places.
Alyssa, if you wouldn't mind for a minute, I'm going to let somebody else go in your.
Right ahead. Go right ahead.
And we'll come back to you. Is there someone else who wants to speak?
Hi, Carolyn P. Amfleet, 3779081. I just want one bit of clarification on the motorcycle. Um, I heard Otto say they wanted to idle to their parking spaces via the golf cart or bike lane. And I have to say, that's what I have a problem with. You're not a bicycle, you're a motor vehicle. I know you're allowed to split lanes and drive that way, but I would think that you would drive at a normal pace down the middle of the road like a car. Stop at all stop signs. That's my, unless I'm, unless I'm misunderstanding, I was getting the impression that they're going to let, they want to ride in the bicycle lane. I think that's very dangerous for the kids who are riding and for golf carts. So I just want a clarification on that.
Thank you. Again, everyone is free to kind of give their opinion. Alyssa, are you ready yet? Not there. I don't.
Bill, can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, are you back?
Yes, I am. Just working on two parts of the puzzle at once. Um, Alyssa DeCasperus and my tracking lot is 3846294. With regard to the motorcycle parking, uh, requiring residents to pay for a secure motorcycle parking is not akin to payment for dock usage. Residents who have boats have an option of renting a dock or keeping their boats at their own homes and trailering them to a launch area and or in and out of the community. Generally, boaters do not use their boats on a daily basis. Residents who have a motorcycle, which are California DMV street legal, require a license and insurance anywhere in California, are prejudiced if required to pay for secure parking since especially those who use their motorcycle for work on a daily basis creates inequity. In addition, residents who use their motorcycles need to have adequate parking for their vehicles that they use to tow to the motorcycle, tow the motorcycle to the parking area, as well as have the ability not to be sighted for parking their vehicles for consecutive evenings in the event that they take their motorcycles to event, for example, Sturgis. And we need to know, and I, I've written this earlier, if not yet being presented, what the definition of secure will be. We have so much theft in the motorcycle parking areas of parts through entire motorcycles, despite the fact that the lots are directly next to the guard shacks and the losses are in the middle of the night when there is little to no traffic or vehicles coming into the gate. That is inexplicable. If secured, what would the P O A's liability be for managing losses?
Thank you, Alyssa. Appreciate that. Sir.
How about that one? Oh man, you don't want to hear this. I'm Gary Snyder, 22646 Canyon Club Drive. And maybe I missed it to begin with, but what was the original ordinance passed for? Was it a noise? Uh, why was it initially passed? Do anybody know? I'll tell you why I'm asking. I have, I have, over the 15 years I've lived here, I've talked to three or four different people and I get three or four different answers. That's why I was concerned is that what are we dealing with here? What do we want to try to take care of? Because all a biker's want to do, I want to go from point A to point B. I'm not going to cruise the lodge. I'm not going to cruise Happy Camp or anything like that. I just want to go from A to B. That's all I want to do. And there's got to be some way to regulate that so that if someone does it and doesn't, doesn't go by the rules, you can find them. And, and that, the whole thing is that, that, uh, I, I think if, uh, if, if anybody have ever, uh, gone like West Hollywood, Huntington, Manhattan, they had the noise issue for a long time. And what they did is they got decibel meters, they put them at the gates or like they don't put, they put them on P C H. And if you go by and you make too much noise, then they, they take a picture of you and they gave you a ticket. And that's, that could be a possibility here. If we could get just a little bit lenient on both sides, on bikers and the board and stuff like this, maybe that's a possibility. I know that, that, uh, as I said, I live right up here. And when they have the car show down here, there are cars that make more noise than motorcycles ever would do. But they're allowed to do that. And that just doesn't seem right. So, uh, thank you for listening to me and we'll go from there.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else who has not spoken yet? Mr. Stelzner, please come forward.
John Stelzner, 3778 lot 009. We can't go from point A to point B in Canyon Lake. We have a, a court decision, we have a C C N R. It's not that I'm against motorcycles. Matter of fact, my dad rode an Indian. Uh, not a Harley. But the thing is, let's talk about C C N Rs. How many times has a board tried to change the C C N Rs to make one set of C C N Rs? And it's failed. How many times has the ACC submitted as part of the election? A change to the C C N Rs to allow six foot fence? That simple change was denied by the community. You don't have enough people voting and you don't have enough um, people that say, yes, let's do it. That's a problem. We even had people vote against having six foot fences. But that's a C C N R. Never could get it changed. And it's kind of a shame, but we're, this is the way things are. And I ask everyone that owns a motorcycle, read the, read the C C N R, read what you can do and what you can't do. The court order also is available, I believe online of that decision. So I just wanted to talk about C C N Rs. They're hard to change. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay. Any others who haven't spoken yet? Cause there's, and there's a lot of people who've got a lot of time, but we're getting along everyone three minutes. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet would like to speak? Yeah, I'm going to call in into the member comments. At this point, are there any board member comments? I will. But I'd be happy to go last.
We're more than willing to hear from you. After the meeting, if you're still around, come and find me. I'll give you my phone number. I'll give you my email. I want to hear your solutions. If you come up with something that complies with the C C N R and it's something we can do, I want to hear it. Thanks.
I want to echo again. I think there was a lot of talk about it this weekend in particular. I know the social media also a lot of interested parties here. Um, and dialogue is good. We truly appreciate hearing your opinions. Uh, we respect everyone's opinions. We're not going to argue as to who's right, who's wrong. It is, it is good for us to hear every person's opinion and give them the respect to be able to voice that. So thank you for doing that. Uh, thank you for everyone having taken that out because, because in doing so, we can understand the, the broader perspective and we can come up with better decisions. Um, and so board members as a, as a point of contact, I took the effort to go through, uh, on social media last night. As of 11 o'clock last night, there were 219 comments on three different social media sites on this subject. Um, on the super official page, there were 86. On the uncensored page, there were 71. And on the Canyon Lake official page, there were 62. While there were 219, uh, total comments, there were some comments from multiple people. And just as an interesting fact, I'm going to add it up real quick. It's, there were a total of, of the 219, there were actually 74 individual people that, that spoke on the subject. The comments were wide ranging. Uh, I'd say of, of the, of those 209, uh, of those 74 people, 13 were in favor of a proposal for skew motor, secure motorcycle facility. 49 were opposed and 12 were just providing some other neutral facts. Just, it, that could just gives you a sense of, of, of the data that's out there and the opinions. And again, it's important for us to, to hear all of that. Um, I appreciate everyone's comments today. I think given what we have here today, that we might want to, instead of voting on this specific measure, we might want to consider an alternate or subsidiary motion. Um, and one, one of the suggestions that I heard that one of the members made, and I think it may have been Ms. Clark, is who came up with, this is recommended, really, there were some members of the security committee and members of the facilities planning committee. Um, and I think it's useful for us to engage the people who are actually going to use and benefit from this facility. And so one of the things we might want to consider is, is having the committees go back and actually having the members of the motorcycle community engage our, those committees and give them their feedback to help us craft a solution that would be optimal for everyone. Any other thoughts? Those are all good suggestions. And again, what we're going to do is if we go forward with this, we would encourage you to, to reach out to our committees to attend the committee meetings or, or send them an email. The email works well and, and provide those feedback. Again, all great suggestions that can help us craft a better solution for our community. So one of, one of those committee meetings, F B C meeting is the what?
Uh, the F B C Facility Planning Committee is meeting this Thursday at 3:30 in the Magnolia Room at the golf course downstairs underneath the patio. Uh, and I encourage you to show up, be there, share your ideas and your thoughts and, um, and give us your information so we can contact you. Uh, if there's something that, that we want to follow up, a new idea, a new question or something, it'd be great to have a roster. We don't have a roster right now. Um, of all the motorcycle owners that are there. Um, so that would be great. Another option for you, if you're not available Thursday, is to email the board. And if you just type in board@canyonlakepoa.com, excuse me. Uh, it goes to all five of us, board members and management. So that's a way to document your thoughts and we can keep records of it and utilize that information. So it'd be very helpful to us to plan this project and we all want to plan this project. Um, but if we don't get enough support from the community, then, um, it may not happen. And it's not the $40 a month that we're worried about. It's getting a project in that is suited for the need. And if the need is just a space to park with a gate that closes, that's it. If it's individual stalls with lights and cameras and all that, then that's going to cost more and, and maybe we would look to recover some costs. So, um, just, it's up to you and how you share your thoughts and needs. So we really look forward to having that. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. And if, for some reason you cannot make the F B C meeting, we do have the F B C chair in the audience. If that in person would like to raise their hand and identify themselves, you might want to reach out to that individual and, uh, and we appreciate the help. So, so please reach out on that. So given that, there's no more time at this point for member comments. Be happy to talk to you about it afterwards. I would like to make a subsidiary motion on this, rather than voting for or against this, I would like to move, make a subsidiary motion that we table this, uh, this decision and send it back to our committee and, and have them engage the user community to assess the demand and, and a recommendation for a solution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? On that one? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Or in favor? When absent, motion carried.
Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate the feedback. And again, we'll continue the dialogue and, uh, and keep moving this forward. Okay, item 8.2 is, uh, we're going to talk about the 2024 Water Sports Clubs Calendar Requests and Lake Use.
Good evening. Uh, so the annually, the, uh, water ski clubs will, um, submit their requests to the P O A for their calendar requests for lake use and rules variance for their, um, club annual events. So this year for 2024 calendar, the Wake Board and Ski Clubs have submitted their annual calendar and rules variance request. The request is to accommodate participation of the members in the club tournaments and events hosted annually. Um, so the specific rules that they're requesting this variance for are for those specific events. It is recommended that the Board of Directors approve, reject the 2024 Water Sports Calendar Requests and Rules Variance as submitted.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar. Excuse me. Um, but I would like to put a, uh, attachment on that, that all participants in the events for those days sign a release because we're, we're waiving some of the rules and some of the rules are safety rules. And I don't want to, uh, expose the community to any liability if there happens to be a situation or an accident. So I'm just asking that, um, the participants sign a release.
We have a subsidiary motion to, uh, to approve it as amended. And is there a second?
Excuse me, if I may remind, are we changing some dates or no? Okay.
We have a first and second. Uh, any member of comments on the 2024 calendar for water sports? No? No? Or member comments, questions?
Yeah, I look at this and I see we've got two weekends in a row that the rest of the members can't use it, that it's taken up in the month of September and October. Can we split those out a little bit? Because, you know, there are other people here besides the ski club and wakeboard club that might want to use that part of the lake.
Do you want me to comment, Mr. President? Okay, so for those in the audience that aren't familiar, last year, the year before, the board approved a lake use policy stating that there shall be no requested events during the months from Labor Day to Memorial Day. And September, obviously, this year, Labor Day fell on the first weekend. So 2024, they are requesting the first, the policy. I'm sorry, let me back up a little bit. Also, the policy also designated that we would allow events on the first and third Thursday, first and third weekend to try to stagger them apart. Based on the conversation with the annual ski calendar, the requested events, the rest of the community events that occur. So there's Labor Day weekend, then in October is the car show weekend. There's a ski show. There's different events that are occurring as to why the clubs requested these particular two weekends for September and October that are back to back. This particular year, it was the same. So the clubs were requesting the same two weekends. There's also been conversation with operations and the clubs about the towers that have to be moved for these particular events. So there was a consensus when this calendar was submitted. So that's why they were asking for the exception. Play that clarify.
And so Lynn, just to clarify, this is consistent with this? The same approach as what we took in?
For this current year, that's right. Correct. Because of the rest of the calendar. Go ahead, Steve.
Yes, Steve wants to weigh in on this, please. I just want the board to be aware that the current late spring, or I guess it'll be the late spring, the towers are going to have to be moved twice, which puts a big strain on operations on that week between the two. If we have any failures or any emergencies, we won't be able to accommodate.
Go ahead. Frank?
Frank Woodman, I'm the Vice President of Water Ski Club. So a couple of things is one is that the our dates are put out in a water ski brochure that everybody gets in the whole country that wants to come ski in Canyon Lake. And so the dates are kind of set for us. And then we worked with the Wakeboard Club to see, get their date, so we coordinated with them. And the dates we picked aren't, the community doesn't come as much in September as they do through the summertime. So that's really not that big of a problem. As far as the moving the towers, the Water Ski Club is quite capable of moving the towers ourselves. And we'll talk to operations. And anytime that you have a problem moving the towers, we'll do it for you. In fact, we already talked about for, I believe, the September tournament. Or there was one tournament, I think, that's the same time as the car show. And we agreed that we'll take care of moving the towers, taking them in, taking them out and putting them back in. So if that's, you know, doable with you guys, we're capable, we all have lots of boats to move them, lots of manpower. In fact, I probably will be the one that's being in charge of moving the towers.
I have no problem with the ski club moving the towers. My concern here with the calendar was the between April and May, they would have to be moved twice. And, you know, it is a difficult process for my staff. And like you said, other things come up, especially like the car show. If it's at the same time, that's obviously in the fall. But I'd be appreciative if the club could help out.
Yeah, you'll work with us. You tell us when you want us to move them or when you can't do it, we'll do it.
Thank you, Frank. Any other discussions, Greg?
Yes, with respect to Director Commission's recommendation for liability waivers, which apparently we aren't getting now. You know, some people might say, oh, gosh, that's more paperwork and more burden for us to go through to make these events happen. But in the end, if that piece of paper helps protect the POA and the POA assets from liability loss of some kind, then it was worth the effort. So again, it's a little bit more work on the club's part. They're probably going to have to secure these waivers if this passes. And but on balance, I think it's probably a good idea for the POA.
Thank you. With that, let's take a vote. All in favor of approving as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Or in favor, one absent, motion carried.
All right, Lynn, why don't you keep on a roll with fee schedule updates?
All right, so over the past few months, staff has been in the process of reviewing the policies and use fees for the rental of the restaurant banquet rooms in areas of each of the restaurants. After reviewing several local venues pricing and taking into consideration the POA's operation and of banquet facilities within the association, staff has proposed a revised rental fees as attached. In this proposed fee schedule, the rate changes are listed for each restaurant and by the group reserving the listed area. Staff is recommending these rates to meet similar market rates and establish reasonable rates for members and the designated groups using the facilities. The proposed rates will assist in reducing the subsidy to the restaurant. The fiscal impact is determined based on the amount of reservations that are booked and the groups obviously using them. So staff is recommending that the board approve the revised fee schedule as attached.
There's a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any member comments? No board comments? I know we've, Lynn and I have been in discussions many times on this. And one of the things that I asked is can we benchmark against other other locations? Because certainly we get a number of calls and comments on, my goodness, I know it's these prices are difficult and to sustain and so forth. But we did have done, I know staff did a great job in benchmarking not only other restaurants, but also other facilities, wedding facilities and things like that. And I know that I'm certainly very pleased with the result that they gave. Actually, I think the number, even the numbers, the numbers we have are certainly competitive. And the fact that we give members a 50% discount is best deal in town, in my opinion. All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Or in favor, one absent, motion carried.
Right, how about sanctioned club policy?
Okay. All right. So Steph, the CLPA sanctioned club policy designates the guidelines for groups requesting to be recognized as sanctioned organizations with the CLPA. This policy outlines the requirements for these groups, including the benefit of being recognized sanctioned organization with the association. One of the benefits that many of the clubs utilize is the discounted menus for sanctioned club banquets. As we know, the cost of everything has increased, which has had an impact on our cost of goods for the restaurants. Staff is requesting a modification to the policy to assist with the operating budget expenses for both restaurants. In the attached policy, staff is requesting that the board approve a designated discount amount for banquet food purchases for sanctioned club banquets. This set amount will allow staff consistency with both restaurants and assist with the overall budget expenses. So just to clarify, for those of you that talk to me, I'm always talking about the subsidy. So staff is recommending that the Board of Directors approve the revised sanctioned club policy as attached. And just for the audience clarification, what we're requesting is that we designate a 10% discount on the banquet food items for sanctioned clubs. And it shall not apply to purchase of alcohol.
Any other motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any member comments?
Same track, same house, same living person. Yeah, my question is, and it says here, sanctioned clubs shall receive a 10% discount off the banquet menu pricing. In the report here, it says that one of the benefits that clubs receive is discounted menu items. So there is a policy now, and I guess there's a discounted menu itself. How much is that discounted menu as it now stands versus 10%?
That is a trick question. Okay, so if you're looking at this particular policy, number three here, the language previously was discounted menu items for sanctioned club banquets. The challenge that we have noticed over the last few years with two restaurants is that they have different costs. And the banquet pricing on the menus is obviously different in both houses. But what's happened is it's a negotiation on each and every single menu and trying to treat the clubs equally the same, having a standard discount that we offer in both restaurants. Because the challenge for the managers are trying to maintain that subsidy and give them a discount as this benefit. So the old policy had a designated amount. Then we've kind of been doing these à la carte, build your own menus. And there's a lot of negotiating. And so it's been requested by staff to management and management to the board to let's go back to a designated amount. Because sometimes it's a dollar, sometimes it's $2. Sometimes the clubs want to have happy hour pricing, regular menu pricing. It's a constant negotiation. And so that's actually why we are putting this on the agenda, is to have a set amount.
Well, my point was, you know, when it did say that there's there's already a discounted menu. And if that discounted menu is 20% now, is this a way of getting around by not saying that and just saying we're going to 10%? I don't know what the designated discount was.
That's the problem. So to clarify that, way back when, when the policy was originally written in the 90s, it had 20% in there. And about 10, five, 10 years ago, they took that out and it just said discounted menu items. And that's where it's kind of been this open ended negotiation on each and every banquet.
So basically, we're going from 20% to 10%?
No, there was no.
Zero to 10%.
Zero to 10%, correct.
Went to zero and now we're recommending a 10% discount again.
Okay, so, all right.
And yes, okay.
Any other members?
And just while I'm at that, just on your previous thing, you know, I'm not looking for, as a homeowner and as a former board member, I'm not looking for our restaurants to be at market price and competitive. We pay a lot of extra dues to have these facilities for ourselves. And I don't think they need to be at market price and competitive market price. They should be at a rate that's favorable to our menus. I know right now there are a lot of clubs looking at going outside of here because our prices have increased to big levels. And it's happening right now today. So we need to be careful that we're not pound smart and penny foolish.
Thank you, Travis. We appreciate your comments and input. Chris?
Chris Pappero. Lynn's talking about me because I'm one of the people that came out onto this with the with the Guild. We spend a lot of money. And I know you keep talking about a menu for the banquets. But that's something that we need to get is an actual physical, something that we can actually look at and go, here's what a meal costs, here's what a hamburger costs, so that we have something to compare it to. And that's really all I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other member comments? I will say, you know, we have to walk a, as a board member, we hear all these comments. We certainly hear from our members, we hear from the clubs, we get calls, we get letters, and we appreciate it. Again, input is helpful to us to make better and informed decisions. In doing so, we walk a tight rope, right? We're walking a tight rope to make it equitable and attractive to our clubs, especially given the past history where we've been quite generous with them. On the other hand, we also walk the tight rope that we want to, we hear is equally loud cry from our members saying, I don't want my dues to go up. I'm on a fixed income, I'm on other things like that. And the more we subsidize these things, we've been putting a lot of pressure on our restaurants and our revenue generating centers to to reduce the subsidies. And so that's the tight rope that we walk. So those are the decisions we have to go, we go through as boards. And as difficult as they are, we try and achieve a balance. Any other comments? All right, all in favor of approving the proposed sanctioned club policy? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Or in favor, one absent, motion carried.
All right, Steve, I hear we have a well on top of the lodge.
Yes. It produces for the lake. No, just kidding. So this is for the equipment well roof on top of the lodge. Over the past, or last rainy season, we had seen more and more leaks on the lodge equipment well roof. The rolled asphalt roof is 23 years old and is in need of replacement. We would like to remove the old asphalt roof and replace it with a newer technology called TPO, which stands for thermoplastic polyphen. TPO is durable, helps reflect light and has a 25 to 30 year life expectancy. Financial impact is $63,900 plus an 8% contingency from 02670. Is recommended, the Board of Directors approve $63,900 plus 8% contingency from the reserve fund 02670 to replace the lodge equipment well roof.
All right, is there a motion to consider this?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Member discussion? A member's discuss, okay? Board members?
Yeah, Steve, building's about, well, 23 years old. Has that roof been touched since it was built?
Only patchwork here and there.
So we got 23 years out of that standard. I forget what it's called.
Yes, the reserve, the reserve report, actually, it's that's end of expect, expectable useful life. They call it a 20, 20 year old roof. But typically, those asphalt roofs are 20 to 25-ish dependent on.
Steve, what's the consequence of not doing it? Of just delaying this, say another year?
You're going to make the kitchen staff very unhappy.
It's a built in shower, I understand. The issue is it leaks.
It leaks, yes.
So we, with the new, the brand new lodge facility we have, we will have water damage if we don't do something.
Yeah, the equipment well is mainly positioned over the kitchen. So when it leaks, it goes, it goes there.
So Steve, you got three bids from what I can see, and they're all very close, which is a good sign, right? But why did you pick the one that you did? Because it seems to be that one wasn't the lowest, if I'm reading this right.
So if you look at the lower bids, most of them were to leave the rolled asphalt roof and then roof over that, which I do not recommend, one, because of weight and two, you're not roofing over something that might be structurally sound because there could be some water damage underneath it that we won't know until that we pulled up, hence the contingency. And then also, some of the, some of the other bids had a few different flavors, the TPO, and then also reusing a rolled asphalt roof, which I would like to go to a newer technology.
Thank you. Yeah, yes, that good. Okay, any other word commentary? All right, all in favor of approving as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Or in favor, one absent, motion carried.
The next one here is for redesign of cart path at the T area, hole two. It was brought to the Green Committee's attention through a member. There is a narrow portion of the golf course cart path at the number two T, which sometimes golfer step on a private property. The Green Committee has recommended that we hire a professional golf course architect to help solve the issue. After we have a design, it will be presented to the Green Committee for their recommendation, put out the bid and come back for entire construction project. The design costs approximately $8,500 plus a 10% contingency funded from 02670. Total project costs would be approximately $93,000. I caution that until we got the bid, we won't know. Uh, I caution that until we got the bid, we won't know the exact number. Uh, is recommended the board of directors approve $8,500 plus a 10% contingency from the reserve fund 026700 to redesign the cart path area and, and T area on hole two.
A motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Member comments? Okay, board comments or questions?
No question, no comment.
So I have a question. Um, how did you come up with the estimate of $93,000 to modify the T? I understand.
So we do, we did have a rough cost estimate done, uh, which was, um, uh, 80, it should be in your board pack, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, it 80 something thousand dollars. And the, uh, designer we'd like to hire comes in about 10% of that cost. So it'd be 10% of the cost plus that rough, rough magnitude.
And let me clarify for my question, because I do see you have all, all of the information in there. And do we, this is for a design. Do we consider any other designs that are lower cost?
Uh, we can, we can do the design. Uh, we can ask the, the architect to, to incorporate a lower cost design. We can present those to the green committee and come back and present those to the board as well. So there's a narrow portion right there by the steps, if you're familiar with hole two, uh, that the, the car path narrows. And, um, there's a small curb. And if you actually step out of your golf cart and you're stepping over that small curb, you're actually stepping on a private property.
There are some very large carts in the community that make it worse. And it's also difficult to get some of the mowing equipment and so forth through that narrow areas, I understand as well. So that's one of the reasons it has been brought forward for, for redesign. Okay, um, I guess I'd like to make a subsidiary motion. That, that, that I'm fine with the design is, is, but I would like to, I, I vote to approve or I recommend we approve the design, but I would like to task them to come up with an alternative options for lower cost as well. Second for that?
Second.
Question? Yeah. Steve, with that, with asking the architect for, through designs, would that increase the cost? Would we need to allow for more money?
I'm, I'm assuming it might, uh, increase the cost, but I, I won't know until I have that discussion with them. I can, I can approach them, uh, and come back to the board or, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what the, what the cost increase would be.
So if we did it with what was proposed with the contingency that's higher than that, then I guess we have a discussion at that point, right? If we approved it as proposed at the 8,300, whatever, 8,500 plus contingency, if it goes above that, because we're asking them to do a little more scope and then you come back to the board with that.
Yes, we can come back to the board for the, for the cost increase, but we'll start the discussions for, for having a, a couple of different designs.
All in favor of the subsidiary motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Or in favor, one absent, motion carried.
All right, Lynn, back to you.
Oh, right. Uh, so this is a approval on a rule revision LR 2.7, no skateboard, scooters or bicycles allowed. With increased popularity of personal electric devices, staff felt it was appropriate to update the restrictions of operate, on operating such devices at or around the lodge facility. Multiple complaints and feedback from the membership have been received regarding the increase in electric bicycles, scooters, skateboards, et cetera, being left unattended around the lodge facility and being ridden dangerously in crowded areas or walkways. Also, the facility recently underwent an overdue renovation. And in an attempt to maintain the area's aesthetics and atmosphere, staff feels this rule and fine revision is necessary. To clarify, this will not apply to the parking lot. So it's recommended that the board approve the rule revision LR 2.7 as attached. Would you like me to review the rules, sir?
We got it forwarded in the package. I think we're okay. I'll make a motion to, to approve. So second?
Second.
Any member comments? Any board comments or questions?
Bill, can you hear me? It's Alyssa DeCasper.
Go for it. Alyssa, we can hear you.
Thank you. With regard to this, my concern was, um, when it was just read, it states that this will not apply to the parking lot. It's my opinion that there needs to be a very specific limitation regarding the use of e-bikes in the parking lots. We witnessed it on the evening of 9/11, as well as on most evenings, people, mainly kids, on e-bikes all over the lodge and lighthouse parking lot, riding recklessly through the parking lots. This creates a danger for both the rider and the vehicle and golf cart driver. On the evening of November 2nd, there was a Canyon Lake Car Club meeting, as well as a number of people enjoying dining outside. A group of e-bikers were doing wheelies up and down the parking lot area. And when the community patrol officer arrived and got out of his truck, he was yelled and cursed at by the kids on the bikes. I was too far to get to where he was, as I would have had no issues supporting him. I agree with the fine, I agree with the rules, but we need to be certain that riding around the parking lots are not allowed to randomly use the area for recreational purposes.
Thank you, Alyssa. Board comments? I know this was a 28 day reading last time, so this is now a vote on, on the measure. All in favor of approving the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Or in favor, one absent, motion carried.
Okay, the next one is also rule approval, revised rule GR 6.4, permanent guest list. In an effort to prevent unauthorized access to the community, the board approved the following amendments to the permanent guest list policy. Permanent guest list will be purged on an annual basis. It is important to note that adequate notification will be provided to the membership prior to the annual purge. The following is being recommended to make the rule consistent with the policy being practiced.
We have a motion?
So move.
I'll second. Member comments? Dan? Any other member comments? What comments? I will add one comment. I know, uh, this, we just had the Halloween holiday and we had the temporary, uh, suspension of, uh, of service providers. And the feedback that at least I know I've gotten from the community has been very positive for that. They felt it actually did have an impact. Maybe it was because it was, Halloween was during the middle of the week, or maybe not. But, uh, I know the feedback I know I received from a number of, of, uh, committee, or community members was, was very positive. I think this, this measure goes along that line. This is really in response to much of the feedback received, uh, after July 4th. I think it was the week after July 4th, and we had a number of members speaking up. And this continues that, uh, this is institutionalizing that practice. So with that, uh, all in favor of, of revising the rule, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Or in favor, one absent, motion carried.
Okay, uh, the next one is actually a 28 day reading, revised rule GR 5.3R illegal parking. It's brought to staff's attention that there is not a rule addressing vehicles parked in a fashion that prevents speed trailer operation and enforcement. Staff is recommending this amendment to allow CLPA to cite these vehicles when appropriate. Staff is also recommending a small increase in the fine amount due to the safety concerns and lack of speed enforcement. After consulting with patrol, patrol, it was decided that a distance of 20 feet is appropriate. So this was actually proposed last month and then we submitted it back for some clarification.
We have a motion to approve or to, for the reading, approve the reading.
So move.
Second. Member comments?
Uh, Bill, if you can hear me, it's Alyssa again.
I can hear you, Alyssa.
Thank you. Um, we need some clarification on this. The trailers are placed in different locations on some prescribed schedule or on the request sometimes of residents when speeding is noted in a particular area. If a vehicle is parked prior to the trailer being placed, how will it be proven by the resident that the car came first? If the board moves forward with this, my recommendation would be that there be specific rules for patrol to note the time, the trailer placement and photos of the area showing that there were no vehicles parked within 20 feet of the trailer for appeals purposes.
Thank you, Alyssa. Appreciate those comments. Travis?
Uh, just one suggestion, um, because 20 feet can be a little bit subjective, uh, as you're pulling up there. And my 20 feet, your 18 feet and is my wife's 22 feet. But, um, I would suggest that you put signs on the front and back of the trailers. No parking within 20 feet, as you see on fire engines where it says, please stay back 500 feet. But if you have a sign on both sides of the trailer, no parking within 20 feet, you kind of help eliminate a lot of subjectivity. People will realize they're supposed to park further away. And it's a kind of easy solution and might eliminate a lot of people complaining about it.
Thank you, Travis. Any other member comments? Or comments?
Yeah, it's, um, I'm opposed to this. I don't carry a tape measure with me everywhere I go. The security guys come out and they go, oh, you're 19 and a half feet. Well, okay, I didn't measure it out. I think there's some gray areas here. Um, I like what Travis said about the signs, but once again, I don't have a tape measure with me all the time. And I'm sure that many others don't as well. So we can look at, okay, Volkswagen bug, is that going to be 10 feet? Motorhome, going to be 20 feet? You know, because they stick out differently. So I will tell you, my vote's going to be no, and that's why I think it's too gray.
Other comment? I know I, I feel differently, Director Bill. I, I think it's a good idea because, because the issue, I'm told that often. I, uh, the issue that I see is I see people parking right up within two, two, three feet of this thing. It's not, it's not the issue of it being, is it 18 feet or 19 feet? The issue is people park right up in front with the intention, intention of preventing it from being used to, to issue a ticket and so forth. And so I think we let reason, uh, be the, be the, you know, the day here. And, and so I think it's something that, that, again, the reason we have speed trailers out there is, is not to make money, is for traffic calming. It is to, to bring people's awareness of their speed and to get them to follow, uh, a safe, a safe speed. And so that's my opinion.
I have one comment, Mr. President. Oh. Sorry, could I add one comment, Mr. President? Over here. That's okay.
This voice out of that.
Hello. Uh, so prior to Amanda leaving, um, she, we had a conversation with patrol about this. And 20 feet, uh, was determined to be sufficient distance to accommodate for the people that are going to be in the gray area, we'll call it. Um, we did talk about signage, we talked about the cones, people taking the cones, people intentionally parking in front of them. All, not that any of these ideas aren't great ideas, but that was kind of where we landed at this 20 feet. Give sufficient space without having to have a tape measure and without asking, uh, I'm sorry, without members potentially taking or moving cones or, um, really intentionally going to block them.
It's basically an SUV car length.
Well, I, I agree with the rule and I think, I think it, we need to implement something, uh, to, you know, not, make sure those are not blocked. And, um, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lynn or Eric. I mean, we can direct patrol not to, to enforce this particular rule by the letter of the rule, the 20 feet, and that a reasonable distance would be acceptable. And, um, nothing we might want to make public, but, uh,
Well, so last
But I think, I think a practical application to this would, would be appropriate rather than a letter of the law.
Correct, but last month we didn't have any footage and that it was tabled for a distance. So that, just to clarify, but yes, sir.
Thank you.
Couple of member comments?
Two execution comments on this. One of them is, um, those things are always in the same place. There's always one on Canyon Lake Drive, south, heading south. On the right hand side, there's always one on Canyon, on vacation, coming down, uh, from the North Causeway Inn. You're placing these things in the same place, you're going to be blocking those people that live there from being able to park in front of their homes with limited parking. I think you need to make sure that they've got sufficient parking because you're going to be shutting them out. Second concern would be, how are you going to know chicken and egg, who was there first? Uh, you have somebody parked there, they put the trailer out and then somebody comes and sights. So I think you need to address those issues.
Thank you. Mr. Hawker?
Thank you, Paul Hawker, 3804052. Um, I think it was about a year, year and a half ago, I did see a social media post of a large black SUV being parked, uh, to specifically, uh, block the, the speed camera uh, from someone who gotten a ticket earlier and wanted to get retribution this way. So I, I understand this and it makes sense. Uh, I imagine it would make sense when you park the speed camera, uh, to actually put cones out 20 feet to make sure that people know that this is a restricted parking area, uh, and not have to carry a tape measure with them. And I think that they do that already, but if not, it's, I think it would be appropriate for them to block off the spot. So people know that, that that's a restricted area and that would solve a whole lot of, uh, of people saying, well, I didn't know and I didn't have my tape measure with me.
Thank you, Paul. And I want to remind everyone too, that, uh, this is a 28 day reading. And so we welcome your comments in that 28 day period. And if you have any additional comments, you can always send them to the board at canyonlakepua.com. Director Kamish.
Yeah, Lynn, um, you said you had some discussions about signage that Travis mentioned and I've mentioned at meetings. Uh, was there positive input, negative input? What kind of input did you have about signage on the trailers themselves?
Well, it came up at the last meeting, so we were just discussing if it's an option, if we want to do that, we could. Um, it wasn't that we couldn't, as far as I recall. Um, but it was more, the, the primary concern was really that space distance, the parking in front of people's houses, that came up. The, a lot of these comments did come up during conversation and that was where the board had requested a distance. So we were trying to come up with a reasonable distance, uh, knowing that the trailer's, you know, being moved and allowing for parking. So, but yes, the signs could be.
Uh, Lynn, I have a practical question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, would those signs need to go on both sides of the trailer, which will make it 40 feet or just on one side?
I'd have to go back and look my notes, but as far as I recall, I believe it was just on the one side because they're parking, blocking as, as the vehicle's approaching and is taking the photo. That's, that's really the whole premise here is the cars parking too close are blocking it from being able to take the photo.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, with that, uh, let's take a vote. All in favor of approving the 28 day reading, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay.
Any in favor, one opposed, one absent, motion carried.
Okay. All right, we are up to association reports. Eric?
Thank you. Um, as usual, I'd like to direct everyone to look at the distributed agenda package and the very detailed staff reports that we always include in there. I'll touch on a few highlights. We had a great concert last Saturday night, the fabulous Thunderbirds. Excellent band, really enjoyed that. Um, we just announced our, um, new concert at the lodge lineup for 2024.
I like it.
Uh, next year, we have, uh, five members of, five original members of, um, Oingo Boingo, Oingo Boingo, I knew I was going to have a hard time saying that, on February 10th, 2024. Uh, and then Thompson Square. Uh, and then Thompson Square on April 10th, 2024, Marcy Playground, which is a country band. No, sorry, um, alternative rock, alternative rock band. August 10th, 2024. You'll, you'll know who they are if you Google them. Uh, Colt Ford, November 2nd, 2024, um, very popular country star. So we're excited for our concert lineup for 2024. I signed the last two contracts today. So we're going to have another season of great shows next year. Uh, if you look at the operations report, as usual, um, they're very busy. Uh, we've been busy. Um, the, uh, project they're working on right now is the Holiday Harbor Dock Replacement and should be complete end of this week, probably. Um, so we're excited about that. It's a larger, uh, public marina uh, over by the fish station at Holiday Harbor and that dock was long overdue for replacement. So we're excited about that. Uh, our project here at the Lodge, the patio area is 99% complete. We're still waiting for our, uh, outdoor furniture delivery. We have, um, a small portion of it here now. The bulk of it is not here. So we've, um, had to make do with plastic chairs and chairs from the, uh, back balcony, um, but behind the restaurant. But, uh, we're expecting that, um, the bulk of it, if not all of it, should be here by the middle of next month. So we'll, we're excited for that and we can cross the patio off our list as complete. And the lounge in the restaurant, which are, uh, were planned as phase two and phase three, are basically running concurrently. Um, the restaurant's a little bit ahead of the lounge, but they're, they're being constructed simultaneously. You probably noticed out here, we've demoed all the original marble flooring. There's a very small amount of that left to do in the restroom right here. And, um, uh, the front doors, when you walk in the Lodge, um, once that demolition is done, everything else, uh, that remains is all new construction and new finishes. So we're almost at the tearing things apart, um, phase, almost done with the tearing things apart phase. The restaurant's been done with that for about a week. So the restaurant is now coming back, um, with all new construction, new finishes. Um, we're about to get to a point where we're gonna stain the wood that was just applied on the walls and start installing booths. So that's moving along very quickly. And, um, looking for the lounge and the restaurant both to be completed by the end of the year. So super excited about that. And let's see what else we have. Uh, our paving project, year two paving project. We should be starting the concrete portion of the work, um, this month and also into December. And then we will be starting the bulk of the asphalt road reconstruction and asphalt replacement in January. If you're in the affected area, which is basically the Longhorn side of the community, um, you will be getting emails and signage. Um, we, we physically tape signs on your garage door, um, the week before we come to do your street. And if we have your email, we'll be emailing each phase at a time, uh, and giving everyone plenty of notice. It's a system we used last year and it worked fantastic and, um, it had virtually no issues. Um, this, this year, the project's a little more complicated because we have to do half of Longhorn and keep the other half open and then switch. Um, and that is definitely, um, gonna be a little challenging. We're gonna do that in pieces. But, um, we have a plan. We have a phasing plan that's already on the website. And like I said, um, if we don't, if you haven't given us your email and you live on that side of the community, make sure we have your email because we're, we're gonna be in constant email communication with the people in those phases. So we're excited about doing that. Uh, it's about $8 million worth of work this year. So another big chunk of our road projects. Uh, and then Steve has submitted the tennis court shaded picnic area improvement project to the city. That's currently in plan check with the city and, um, we've already put it out to bid and should be getting our bids back next week. Okay, okay. Oh, I guess I was reading your, um, operations report and you were in plan check when the report was written. So my bad. Once again, Steve's way ahead of the game. So, um, that's all I have for tonight. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, board comments? Greg, why don't you lead us off?
Halloween. What a great tradition that is in Canyon Lake. Now I'm fortunate to be on one of those streets that has lots of traffic on blue teal. And, uh, we went out there this year and set up our table and the kids and the parents and the golf carts started coming in droves. And they kept coming. And so I was sitting out there uh, for about 15 minutes. I just got transfixed by all the kids and the activity in the golf cart and I was sitting there by myself. And my wife comes up and she goes, are you having a good time? I said, yeah. She goes, well, we just ran out of candy. So next year, we'll stock up and do better, but, um, I'm telling you, what, what a great tradition it is. And we, we have a great Christmas tradition and several others here, but Halloween just is one of the best we have. The kids have so much fun. I want to bring you up to speed on some things that, uh, are happening in the Recreation Committee, for which I'm the liaison. Uh, what a great committee. They come up with these small ideas, but really creative and neat ideas that are, you know, very practical, practical and, and helpful. One thing they've, they're going to recommend is, uh, a shade cover and small bleachers at the, um, cornhole and horseshoe courts, uh, at the senior center. Uh, another thing that they're working on is bicycle racks. You know, when we have all these e-bikes now and regular bikes and we need to have a place to put them. So they're going to, uh, they've got a subcommittee that's going to go around to the entire community and identify uh, practical places where the e-bikes, uh, and all bikes can be, um, tied up and secured. And the last thing I want to touch on is something very practical that, that actually, uh, again, came up in recreation and someone said, well, you know, we can't wash our cars here in Canyon Lake. And, and when I moved here, my sister-in-law said, oh, you know, we have a lot of rules here, which was true. Uh, we found out. And one of them, she said, is you can't wash your car in your driveway. You can't do that. And so that came up at the Recreation Committee, uh, last meeting and I looked into it and it turns out that's not true. Uh, the city code, not the POA rule or POA code, the city of Canyon Lake code says you can wash your car in your driveway. However, if you have a professional, a detailer, come and do it, then somehow he's supposed to capture the water and recycle it or something. In other words, it can't go down the drain. Now that seems like kind of a silly rule, but that's what it says. So, um, for all of you just dying to go out and wash your car this weekend, you're free to do that. Go ahead. So that's it. Thank you.
I want to know what you dressed up for on Halloween. What were you?
I was me.
Oh, okay.
Pretty scary though.
It is scary. Jeff?
Well, I don't have a lot to say, but I would like to, um, add that along with all the motorcycle secure parking that we're looking at, we are also working on the security contract and moving forward with that and evaluating different companies there. We realized that, you know, there's more to it than just the motorcycle parking. So we are looking at the big picture. Uh, the other thing, just to let you guys know, um, and I'm looking it up here, so bear with me. Uh, November 16th at 6:30 PM, we are launching our pilot program on the neighborhood watch. Um, so we will be doing that and some more information will be coming out on that shortly. Uh, that's been all I have. I don't want to keep you all too late. So thanks for coming. I appreciate all the feedback on the motorcycle issue. We've been wanting to hear feedback. So it's nice of you guys to show up.
Thanks, Jeff. Joe?
Yeah. Um, well, first of all, I, I'm always amazed when I come in from the parking lot and look at the patio, especially in the evenings when the lights are on. And I really want to thank Eric for his vision and persistence to get that project through because it was a long, hard battle over a number of years. And, um, I'm glad that, uh, he stayed with it and, and we got the project going and that part of it's done. I'm excited to see the interior when it's completed. Uh, I've heard some descriptions and it, it sounds like it's going to be equally as nice. So, um, I, I just wanted to shout out for, to Eric for that. We talked about it, uh, about the motorcycle owners. And I want to just encourage you again to give us your input. If, without your input, there's not much we can do. And, uh, we're not going to go spend $250,000 if we're not sure anybody's going to use it. So, uh, right now, the ball's in your court. Green Committee is actively working. Uh, there are openings for the Green Committee. If you're least bit interested in the golf course and the, uh, caring for the golf course and would like to serve on a committee, I urge you to contact Member Services or go online, fill out an application, uh, for a position on the Green Committee. We have three openings right now. Senior Center is moving along. They're coming up with their holiday parties, planning for those. So the New Year's party and the Christmas party, uh, dates will be out soon and, uh, encourage people to sign up and attend. They also, um, received their new generator. Thank you, Steve, for getting that out there. The propane tank is in place. Uh, and it's in the process of being hooked up. So, um, it'll have a full powered generator operate the senior center, which is a big plus for the community. And with that, I'll say thank you all and hope you all have a very happy Thanksgiving. All right.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, we're, uh, we're now in holiday period, right? We're all getting, starting to get ready for the holiday events. Just to give you, um, some upcoming events, if you're not aware, uh, the Sunday after Thanksgiving, November 26th, will be our tree lighting ceremony out here. And again, uh, activities always does a terrific job with that. It's fun to see the, the families come out for that. And Santa will come to Canyon Lake. Um, not to be, uh, done about a week later. I think December 3rd, we've got the golf cart, uh, parade and toy drive. And so that's a good one. And then one of our perennial favorites, uh, in our family is the Parade of Lights on December 9th. Uh, our next board meeting will be on the 5th, so we'll get together just before that. Um, and so the next big thing, I guess, you know, for all of us personally is, uh, is Thanksgiving, right? In, in a couple of weeks here. Uh, I, uh, we as a family are, are, we're, we're planning on, uh, or we are going to be welcoming our fourth grandchild, uh, the weekend before. So and we're very excited and thankful for that. Um, but I also just want to take this time to thank, um, Eric and staff in particular. You know, we live in a, we live in a great place. Uh, Canyon Lake is really special. I mean, especially because we have a lot of people that work really hard. Um, and they, they, you know, sometimes get a lot of crap for it. Uh, we certainly get a lot of opinions, but, uh, but they work, uh, pretty tirelessly. And I want to thank, uh, I thank you for, for all of the hard work, uh, you and the staff, uh, that, uh, that, that serve us all. Um, I also want to thank all of our committee members, all of our clubs. Right? Again, that's what kind of makes special, uh, Canyon Lake, uh, special. Um, and I want to thank my fellow board members. Um, it's a, it's a lot of effort that's put into, to serving. They do this, uh, really to, for the, to the betterment of the community. And I want to thank you. It's, it's actually been a pleasure uh, serving with all of you. Um, I want to thank, uh, in addition to the board members, I want to thank the spouses of the board members because, um, we are sometimes on the phone literally in the morning, late at night. Uh, we sometimes get frustrated and then we have to turn to somebody to, to, uh, to share some of that frustration with and and the, uh, they're, they're, they're the ones that support us and all of it. So thank, thank you to, to our spouses. And I do also, I want to wish everyone a, a happy Thanksgiving. I was gonna say that at the next meeting. Back to the saying, that's true. As always, again, the great, a great, uh, again, so many great things happen at Canyon Lake. That's why we like living here. Um, before we can move to the next up, do we have any architectural appeals?
I'm actually happy and pleased to say that, uh, both of our appeals for Mr. Burns and Mr. Francic have pulled their appeals. They are both in the process of working with the ACC Committee. So you have another present here. Thank you and you're welcome.
Thank you. We are, we are ever grateful for that. So thank you. And, and again, yeah, Cheryl, you at Planning Compliance and ACC, um, I think we know all the, all the ire that you sometimes draw from people because you're, you're just notifying them and enforcing the rules, but, uh, we, we appreciate the tireless efforts that, uh, you all provide for us in the community. With that, uh, how about a, a, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned.